Good evening. My name is Jerry Cochran and I'd like to call the City of Pasco Planning Commission Meeting to order. I'd like to welcome all those in attendance this evening and ask you to join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to begin tonight's meeting by asking Director Gonzalez to call the role.
Yes, Commissioner Torres.
Present.
Commissioner Jones.
Present.
Commissioner Lerman.
Present.
Commissioner Campos.
Present.
Commissioner Crutchfield.
Present.
Commissioner Teal. Commissioner Handler.
Present.
And Commissioner Cochran.
Present.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Before we get started, I'd like to welcome new Commissioner Pat Jones. So everybody, if you haven't met him, let me meet him afterwards, but welcome to the team.
Thank you. Great to be here.
All right. The Planning Commission is an advisory board made up of volunteers appointed by the City Council. The purpose of the Planning Commission is to provide recommendations to City Council regarding changes to the city's comprehensive plan, land use updates, block grant allocations, and zoning code. The Planning Commission is tasked with considering the long-term growth and development of the community, the impact of land use decisions on the community, livability, economic opportunity, housing affordability, public services, and the environment. I'd like to recommend the audience, I'd like to remind the audience that tonight's proceedings are being broadcast live on the City of Pasco's Facebook page and on Spectrum Charter Cable, PSC Channel 191, and will be rebroadcast several times over the next month. The meeting is also being recorded so you can watch it on the City of Pasco's website, which is pasco-wa.gov. Click on the video on demand link and make your selection of the meeting there. There are copies of the meeting agenda available. You may also follow along with meeting. At this time, please silence your cell phones to prevent interruptions at our meeting. For those present this evening, when you're given the opportunity to address the commission, please come forward to the podium, speak clearly into the microphone, and state your name and city of address for our records. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I need to remind the audience and the Planning Commission that Washington state law requires public meetings like this one being held this evening, not only to be fair, but also appear to be fair. In addition, Washington state law prohibits Planning Commission members from participating in discussions or decisions in which the member may have a direct interest or may be either benefited or harmed by the Planning Commission's decision. An objection to any Planning Commission member hearing any matter on tonight's agenda needs to be aired at this time or will be waived. First, are there any Planning Commission members who have a declaration this time, have this time regarding any agenda item? Let the record show, there were no declarations. Second, is there anyone in the audience this evening or on the phone who would object to any Planning Commission member hearing any of the items on the agenda? Let the record show, there were no declarations. We, as a Planning Commission, need and value your input. It helps us understand the issues more clearly and to make better recommendations to City Council. Furthermore, in many cases, your input here at this Planning Commission meeting is your only opportunity to get your facts and opinions placed onto the official record the City Council will use to make its decision. I encourage you to take full advantage of this as an opportunity. Moving to our agenda and the items on the agenda, the first item is the approval of meeting minutes. These meeting minutes were provided to commissioners ahead of time, mailed out or provided. I trust you had the opportunity to take a look, and I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes or any questions or you have regarding the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes from August 15, 2024 meeting.
Excellent. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Been moved by Commissioner Campos and seconded by Commissioner Crutchfield. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Let the record show, the meeting minutes were unanimously approved. We'll move right into, we have no unfinished business, so we'll move right into the public hearings portion. We have one public hearing tonight, which is CA 2024-001, which is the overnight truck habitation code proposal draft. So I'll turn it over to staff for comment.
Good evening, Commissioners. So this is the second public hearing on the overnight truck parking habitation. Back in May, we came before you with a public hearing with just a concept plan, no actual regulations, and over the last couple of months, you all have crafted this amendment. So just a quick overview, the changes are to Title 25 of the Pasco Municipal Code. We've added a definition of overnight truck parking and established it as a use, which is overnight truck parking and habitation facility means an off-street site where commercial vehicle drivers can park their vehicles with or without an attached trailer, where said driver can access onsite amenities and sleep in their vehicles. We've established the permitted zones as allowed in all industrial zones, so I-1, I-2, and I-3 as a primary or accessory use, and it would have to be permitted via special permit as it is a conditional use. So primary and accessory use both have to be permitted via conditional use special permit. We established some general requirements and development standards, such as prohibiting a facility within 1,000 feet of residential or mixed-use zoning districts or existing residential uses, parks, and schools, requiring the site to be accessed from highways or truck routes, as identified in the Pasco Municipal Code. We have various site access and layout requirements and the size tractor-trailer that it would have to accommodate, the maximum facility size of 15 acres, maximum stay length. We also have security requirements, where the site shall have 24-hour onsite management, automatically closing access gates, and perimeter fencing. We have safety lighting requirements. We have permanent restroom requirements and solid waste disposal requirements. We also have additional onsite amenity requirements, all based on the number of truck parking stalls with water fountains and pet relief areas required, no matter what, and then additional amenities can be such things as showers, clothes washers, outdoor seating, etc. We have landscaping and screening requirements and signage, which would show truck route maps, so the drivers know where they should drive when they're leaving the facility, and also phone numbers for onsite manager and other city and county departments. And last, we established accessory uses for the different types of uses and buildings that would be considered accessory to truck parking as a primary use. And with all those requirements, we have a map that shows the portion of the City of Pasco where these items, sorry, where this use would then be allowed. So it's the gray land that isn't hatched out. So the hatched out area are all areas that are parks, schools, residential, and mixed-use zoning districts, and existing non-conforming residential uses, as well as that 1,000-foot buffer. And you can see the highways and the truck routes illustrated in red. So any change to the county code has to be in alignment with the comprehensive plans, goals, and policies. So this is just a list of some of the goals and policies we feel that this amendment is in line with. The rest are in your packets as part of the staff report, but we do feel that the transportation policy to, of, it's TR-5-A, which is support the development of facilities that are critical components of the movement of freight, is what this amendment will accomplish and it's really focused on. We're hoping that the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to the City Council at the end of this meeting, and then we'd be, staff would be able to take this amendment to City Council later this winter.
Great, thank you. First, we'll just open it up for questions and feedback from the Commissioners, so go ahead.
Commissioner Crutchfield, I wanted to commend the staff on a lot of the work that you've done in revamping this, or as we've talked about it for a couple of different meetings. I know a lot of work went into this, and I think that's very commendable. I also feel like, because this is such a new project that we're undertaking, that is, I don't believe I would be one of a kind in the state, I believe that we are using care and caution when we're going to recommend something. I believe that people have the right to develop their property and come forth and request to do so if they're interested in doing something. However, also, as we talk about in your form and your documentation here, that we want to make sure we're minimizing the negative impact of traffic, environment, community aesthetics, and so forth. I have a couple of questions about the map in general, and specifically, when I look at this, and maybe you can clarify, is there any area here close, it looks like it may be able to be adjacent to Road 36. There is some industrial in that area around the airport, and if that's the case, we have neighborhoods that are overlooking that airport. Is that, am I off on that?
Those areas, you see kind of the outlined in blue with the white fill in the center? Yeah, those are unincorporated areas of the city, so those would be permitted, would need to be permitted by the Franklin County Department, and they would coordinate with us, so we could certainly provide comments if a project like this did come through their efforts, but my understanding is the majority of that in the county has got a low-density residential zoning district.
Okay, so our moving forward with this, as you presented, would not place any kind of jeopardy to those residents living particularly north on that neighborhood that overlooks the airport. I know, you know, they may say, well, they listen to airport noise and planes taking off. Well, planes do take off. Maybe after 10 or 11, they do not, and before 5 or 6, they don't in the morning, but these truck, this truck noise will be, you know, from the refrigerators and so forth, that goes 24/7. And I know noise studies have indicated that noise of that magnitude goes up and out, so that, I was just wondering on that point, but thank you for clarifying that.
All right, other Commissioners, go ahead. Commissioner Jones.
All right. Thank you very much. So I read all of this to try to bring myself up to speed, so I could be prepared for this tonight. This is somewhat, is the landowner wanting to bring this forward and make this, turn this into a business to do this? Is that what's going on with this?
Well, let staff clarify, but we originally had a proposal by an applicant to make this amendment, and this is proceeding even though I believe the applicant has withdrawn.
Correct. There's no current application for a specific project to utilize this amendment right now?
But we're carrying on with it, just in case this were to come forward in the future?
Yeah, I think based on the research conducted over the last several months, there is a need for this use, given the rapid industrial development occurring in the region, and so staff felt it was still appropriate to carry on with providing an amendment for the Planning Commission to discuss and review.
I know there's an article in the newspaper not too long ago that talked about there's going to be an increase in truck traffic coming soon and increasing over the next weeks, months, and years, so it seemed like a timely topic. So although the applicant has removed themselves, but the project's going on to address a future project that might come forward, but there's no applicant at this time, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much. And so, the lady sitting next to me, were you talking about this area right here, these two white spots?
Well, that's why I was asking for clarification from staff about where in this map my concern would be, and around the 36, Road 36, and around the industrial area around the airport. And he answered that question for me.
And just for clarification, they are zoned various rural residential zoning districts with Franklin County.
Okay, but I was just asking you if these were the two that you were asking about, or if it was, or what? Just so I could understand what your question was.
Maybe Jennifer, you can point out on the map where exactly Road 36 and that development would be.
Because based on this, it would be allowed in anything light industrial, medium industrial, or heavy industrial, correct? Yeah.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. So these white areas, then?
Those are the county donut holes.
Okay.
Oh.
The famous county.
Very famous. The blue line is the Pasco city limits.
Okay, so they just, they're just, yeah, so they're just donut holes in the incorporated area of the City of Pasco?
Unincorporated, those are donut holes, so they're unincorporated. So as Jacob said, they would be under the jurisdiction of Franklin County, but he indicates that Franklin County would coordinate us if an applicant applied in those areas, is that correct?
Yes, we do try to coordinate as best we can with projects or amendments within the urban growth area, which this is within the urban growth area for Pasco.
So the last part of my question, then, so because that would be the case, then it could possibly be easier for the county to succeed in granting one of the truck habitation around that area. I know that this probably is going to seem too narrow, but maybe just not allowing the truck habitation west of Fourth Avenue. I mean, most of your industrial was over in that area anyway, aside from the airport, and...
I think they have a point, there'd be those, you could do all you want in the city, this is county jurisdiction, they can do what they want, even if we say not pass Fourth Avenue. So, but I think it sounds like we have a partnership that they would coordinate with, so.
Thank you.
Go ahead. I mean, are you?
Yeah, thank you. That covers what I had.
So, so reading this, this site, the site map here, industrial zone 1, 2, and 3 are what we're talking about here. And I look at that, I look at this map, and I just see those areas, unless I'm mistaken, in the northeast corner of this map. Is that right?
And down here.
Oh, and down here, okay.
And not the hash.
But there's nothing over here on this, on the west side that I can see?
No. The way the future land use map for the City of Pasco is, is the majority of industrial land uses are towards the north and eastern edges, proportions of the urban growth area and Pasco city limits, and so I can try to show on the cursor here that this is the Tri-Cities Airport, and then you've got the 395 corridor, where you've got industrial zoning districts currently today with some active development, and then along the east of the 395 corridor and along Highway 12, outside of the hashed areas, given that those are within that proximity buffer, a overnight truck habitation would be allowed via a special permit in those gray areas outside of the hashed marks.
Very good. And so it's inside those areas that we're talking about, Jacob, that these potentially 15-acre sites would be, would be allowed to develop as, yeah.
Does anyone know why the applicant pulled out?
The applicant will, is here, right? An previous prior applicant, and we'll open it up to public hearing, and if he wants to talk about that, he can.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Commissioners, and we don't have anybody on the phone, right? Go ahead.
I have one other question, and it's a bit of a hipshot here, but they talk about the fences and landscaping around these areas. To me, that's an important aspect of these developments. It's what, it's the people on the outside of these developments and what they're looking at, it's going to be very important. So, I mean, is it, is it chain-linked fence? I mean, and are, is landscaping going to be required around this, visual landscaping? Pardon my naivety here, I just...
No, no problem. In fact, I just wanted to go back a slide that has the proposal to include landscaping and screening requirements for this potential use.
Of course, in the course of working with the people developing these sites, the city will be able to work with them in terms of what, what they'd like to see and work with them in terms of developing landscaping and fencing, you know, even, you know, as it goes forward in the planning stages.
That's correct, and there's also the special permit associated with the proposal, so eventually a project would end up in front of the Pasco hearing examiner, and if the applicant can reasonably demonstrate that their proposal is in line with the municipal code and the provisions for a special permit, then the examiner would make a decision based on those results.
Very good, thank you. And just in conclusion, as far as I'm concerned, with what's going on with the trucking industries these day, these days, this is exciting, and I think it's something we really need, so thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner Lerman.
I have a question for, far as timeline, so when did you guys first originally get approached about this zoning change and then creating a municipal code to accommodate it? How many months ago, and then up to the point that you brought it to the Planning Commission? And then how many total months altogether? Have you guys been working on this?
I think formally with the Planning Commission, as the staff report indicates, this was brought to the Commission at the January 2024 meeting, and with respects to the initiation of the actual code amendment, that, I don't recall specifically the date, but likely late 2023.
Okay, so to recap, so it's about nine months that it's been here at this level, Planning Commission, for a code that is not existing in the state of Washington at this point in time.
In our research, we did not find a similar code for us to use as a guideline from other municipalities in the Northwest.
And that Washington Department of Transportation is very interested in this code that potentially City of Pasco will end up possibly passing, and which may be possibly used as a blueprint for the rest of this.
Yeah, we don't have a formal letter of support, but we did coordinate and have some communications with the State Department of Transportation, I think, given the relationship between freight and the highway system facilitated by WashDOT, that there seems to be reasonable interest from WashDOT on a proposal like this.
And for Richland and Kennewick, have you heard of any interest in this code that is being developed?
Not aware of any at this moment.
Okay.
All right. I have a couple of questions, and then we'll kind of, if no Commissioners have any more questions, we'll open up the public hearing. I just want to question around, the thing that I occurred as I was looking at all the numbers, has anybody like done the math on, I'm thinking 30 74-foot trucks in 15 acres, does that even work math-wise? Did we actually do the math? Because what I don't want, I hate, I hate ordinances that make it impossible to actually do anything, so the thing, the question I'm asking is, is a 15-acre with 30 stalls for 74 trucks, is it actually even practical? Would anybody be able to do it with the additional things that you have to put in it, like sewer and amenities and all that stuff? To me, I don't know that answer, I'm just asking if the math was done to say if this is even a feasible site.
Yes. There is a approximately, I think, 13-acre site that was developed in Tennessee, and they have over 200 truck parking stalls.
Okay, thanks, that's a good reference, yeah. Yeah, I just, for me, I don't know, you know, you have to do the math around how many square foot, 74-foot stall takes, and then how many of those fit into 15 acres with buildings and bathrooms and all that, and I'm assuming we did that, but I just want to make sure it was actually a feasible site, so. That was my main question. I will reopen it for Commissioners, and if there's no, go ahead, Commissioner Jones.
Would campers or anything like that be allowed in here, or just semi-vehicles, trucks like that?
Just commercial freight, so no RVs.
No RVs, okay, thanks.
All right, any other Commissioners questions? Otherwise, I will open the public hearing. All right. Let's open the public hearing. If you're here to speak on this issue tonight, please come forward, state your name and city of address, and make sure the microphone turns red.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is John Schlein with B4 Development and Consulting here in Pasco, Washington. We were the original applicant, so let's start with some of the good stuff that I want to commend you for. I commend you for following through and getting this done. That's a positive thing, I think, in the City of Pasco, to be able to have the very first citizen-led initiative for a code amendment change, and this is really needed. And so, you know, we sit here and say, congratulations, I believe that this is a great thing for the City of Pasco. Few concerns that we have, we actually did start this process last summer, and so our client came to us and specifically found this location, knowing that it was on the truck route to Amazon, and so they chose this location, knowing exactly that, and they were excited about it. Now, you and I could sit here and kind of talk about that site and realize it potentially is too close to residential, I can agree with that, but when you start to put a 1,000-foot buffer, those maps are actually inaccurate. If you were to look at just to the north of us, there are areas where you could have residential on the south side of an interstate, and it's closer than 1,000 feet to the other side of the interstate, which means that other side couldn't even have this. So all of a sudden, you've strapped it to that. So that's one big issue we have. Several of the other things that have started to come up is the reason in which our client had to finally pull out. It's been too long, we've been stringing them along for a long period of time, that's one of the reasons, and then when we started to see all of the added things that kept adding to the pile of this and this, it just doesn't pencil for a developer to be able to do this. So while I commend you for putting this on the agenda and making this happen, what you've done is you've actually regulated this business out of existence, and so there's going to be very difficult time for developers to come in here now and actually do everything that you're requiring. Now, I'm not saying everything you're requiring is bad, but what we asked for last summer was to go through the special permitting process, which then also has to go through a hearings examiner, and that process, we believe, should have been available. There's already truck parking in C-3, and there's already RV parking, RV parks that can go into C-3. So you've got truck parking that can go into C-3, you've got RV parking that can go into C-3, but what you're saying is, you can't combine the two at all and do it in C-3. And so I really caution you to say, it has to be in I-1 through I-3, it has to be 1,000 feet from any residential, and including in this agenda, it says it has to be 1,000 feet from even an RV park. And so there's an RV park that's on that list, that now you're talking 1,000 feet around King City area, which would be another great place for it on Commercial Avenue, but now you have to be 1,000 feet from an RV park, which is on Commercial Avenue. So you're, you're making this completely difficult for a business to be able to succeed, and so I just want to caution you on that, congratulate you on getting this done, say kudos to you, but unfortunately, we missed the mark, and we've regulated this business out of existence, so thank you.
Thank you for being here. Do the Commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Thank you for being here. Do the commissioners have any questions for the applicant or former applicant?
Okay. Um, question not for the applicant, but for staff, if I may?
Absolutely.
Okay, so if this were to be approved and everything, could an advocate then come forward and, and uh ask for a, a special permit? Asking for some of these to be waived then through the special permitting process?
The next steps would be for this to go to city council and council uh could choose to revise the planning commission uh recommendations. Um, assuming uh this goes to council as it is presented tonight and adopted by council as presented tonight in the staff report. Um, then an applicant could uh pursue a special permit application, which would be a, a public, require a public hearing with the examiner. We do have a variance option, um, uh that is also um a public hearing that is conducted by the Pasco hearing examiner. And at those meeting or at that meeting, the examiner would then uh review a project based on its compliance with um the municipal code requirements.
It's certainly not uncommon for municipalities to, to do what the gentleman said, and that i- is regulate uh businesses and things out of business. So the variance process is one way to allow that to, to not happen. And we would never, we would never want, I would hope, we, we would never want to regulate businesses out of business. So there, there is relief for that, and the variance process is one way of to do that, especially when something is as new as this. I, I'm in agreement with a lot of the things that are in there as far as the, the fence and the, and the, the um, not, not decorations, but the uh, the landscaping and all of those things. I think it's vital that that be there for, for the betterment of the area. But I also think there are probably some ways to make that work. The, the comment of the thousand feet from the RV park, for example, I think is one, one very good one. So I think if there's a will, there's a way, and there would be ways to make this project work. So that's good to know that someone could come forward either through, through a variance or, or whatever. If they really wanted to make this project work, that would always be out there for someone who wanted to. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions, feedback for staff or? Go ahead.
What's the maximum number of trucks that would be allowed? I'm, I'm sure it's in here somewhere. I don't see it.
We don't have a maximum number of trucks because the number of trucks you can fit on a site can vary greatly depending on uh your site design and if it's angled parking or back in, straight back in parking. So we just ma- we have a max on the site size. So we don't limit the number of trucks. We just limit the site to fifteen acres.
So fifteen acre site, we, however many trucks we can get on there, plus all the additional required um facilities and stuff, including circulation and all the nine yards?
Correct.
Hmm. Okay, thank you.
Um, one of the questions I had is, I mean, I, that's what I've been worried about regulating out of existence the whole time we've been talking about this, since January, right? Is, but I do honestly, the special permit process is designed for that. And so I've always worried as we've put so much in here that we have kind of defeated the purpose of special permitting. Um, but at the same time, I think some of the things we've provided are good guidelines. I'm just curious, has the prior applicant propi- provided alternate proposals to some of these? Like instead of a thousand foot, I, it would be really good if we could do five hundred feet. I mean, if you want to answer that, feel free, but. Or are, like the one you referenced in Tennessee, do they have setbacks? Do they have a code or they have, they maybe not have code, but if they have setbacks that are similar, it might be interesting to know where their alternate proposals proposed by the applicant or others to say, this would make it feasible to me. Thousand is too much, but seven fifty is okay. I mean, I'm just, I mean, curious about that.
I talked to the planners who worked on the Tennessee projects, um, and they regulated it like it was a truck stop. Uh, and it, yeah, so as far as I know, they didn't have any kind of setbacks like ours. But it was also um not near any residential areas. It was literally across the street from um, on a, a main highway in a very rural area.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, I mean, I do think that, I mean, obviously, one thing is we just make recommendations of the applicant and others can come to city council and say, we don't like the thousand, we want it to be five hundred, and city council could say it's five hundred. Um, so um, I, I think that's, there's still room to do that, as could the special permit allow or in variance process allow that thousand or whatever the problem is to go away. So I guess I would encourage, like, um, if the applicant, former applicant has counter proposals, I'd love to hear them, but I haven't heard them. So um, that, that would be one option too.
I'd like to make a motion that this move forward to city council.
It, either a second or if somebody wants to ask questions before that, we can.
I'd like to ask a question, actually a comment. Um, the thousands, the thousand feet is actually like three blocks, right? Isn't that, I'm not very good at that, um, but I think.
It depends, uh, um, I know the block links very well. It depends what part of the city you're at. If you're uh north of the interstate, um, uh then a thousand feet could be anywhere from one to two to three blocks. Um, if you're in central Pasco, a thousand feet could be four blocks.
Okay, interesting. But I, a- again, I think, you know, when this applicant came forward, they wanted in a, in a C three area um within three blocks of the existing residential use. And if I were one of those residents or had my property there, I wouldn't like that. I don't think there's a comparison between an RV park and this truck habitation. RV park, I'm thinking of maybe uh the KOA or the off of the highway there. Kind of stands alone, isn't that, but very good buffer landscaping and that or that situation. That is much different than this particular proposal.
Okay, we have a, we do have a motion from Commissioner Jones, but if either we have a second or we have more questions, so it's also like you have a question.
I've got another question. So the thousand feet, um, just for conversational purposes, sounds like a lot. That's, that's like a, over a football field. To give you a, an idea of scale. Um, and I'm gonna assume that that thousand feet will be coming out of the fifteen acres. In other words, in the, in the fifteen acres, that thousand feet will, will, will go around the perimeter of that fifteen acres. And then what's inside the rest of that is what they can develop. Does that sound right?
Now, the buffer goes from the property line outward, like, yeah, so um, let's see. Um, so the buffer goes from those buffered uses, like parks and schools outward.
So, so the fifteen acres and then outside of that will be this football field surrounding it of, 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 of buffer?
No, we, uh, we don't, you're not buffering the, the truck habitation use. You're allowing the truck habitation use outside of the buffer that starts from parks, schools and residential and mixed use. Zones and.
I, I can, uh, using the cursor, what you see on the map here in the blue outline with the hash is that buffer area already incorporated. So where my cursor is at, if you can see it right here.
Mm-hmm.
It would be allowed in, in this area. It is outside that buffered area, so it would be allowed uh, uh, in that area. And, and the other gray areas as well, of course, uh, outside of the buffer.
Pardon me, I'm getting a little too architectural here, but I just, I don't quite follow that yet. So at some point in time, we, we can discuss it further.
Here's another way of saying it is that we have factored the buffer zone or the buffer requirement into the hashed areas. And so things that aren't hashed means that we've already factored that in, so you could put this fifteen acres in those gray areas.
Correct.
Does that make sense?
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, any other questions or we do still have a, a, a motion on the table?
I think just that point of clarification. So a thousand feet, so football fields, a hundred yards, three feet to a yard, right? So we're looking at three plus football fields to kind of help people visualize um during this football season. So, um, as, as we think about the distance from um where we want to protect and where um the opportunities would be.
It's, it's a math, but a football field's three hundred yards. That's nine hundred feet.
Oh, I thought it was a hundred yards.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No.
I, I need to watch more football.
Three.
Would you say one football field? Sorry, sir.
This one football field is, is a hundred yards.
Three hundred feet.
Three hundred feet. So it'd be three, three football fields for this buffer.
Yes.
I need to learn more about that. It sounds weird to me, but okay.
Yeah, so we're on the same page. Sorry about that.
All right, any other questions or clarifications or feedback? Or uh, again, um, I'm assuming, uh, Commissioner Jones, do you still support your motion?
Yes.
Okay, or we can have a second.
I second.
All right, Commissioner Jones has uh, uh, made a motion to recommend the amendment as is to city council. Uh, it's been seconded by Commissioner Torres. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Nay.
All right, let the record show that we had um one nay and we had uh others uh, uh in favor. And then we, oh, you, oh, you were a nay as well? Okay, so we have two nays and the rest are in favors, so the motion successfully passes. Uh, so we, this will, can you give us a sense too, is like, um, what's the schedule for city council? Is it next month's workshop and then?
Yeah, well, this will be uh pre- uh presented at uh the, um, the next available uh council workshop meeting for discussion and deliberation and, and some further review by the uh, uh, by city council. And then um, uh presented then at a regular meeting for adoption. So I would anticipate that this would be in front of council um in some form uh next month in October, um, as we try to wrap up uh the end of the year.
And there's also the possibility they could send it back to.
Sure, certainly, certainly.
Okay. All right, thank you, everybody. Um, good discussion. Uh, this is a complicated one, so. It's taken us a while to get this out of the chute, but it, it's, it's hard. Uh, with that, um, we have no um other business on the agenda. Is there anything you want to bring up? Do you want to give us a sense of what the coming month's agenda might look like?
Yes, uh, we are uh soon gonna be preparing some um, um, really fun work in preparation of the next uh major comprehensive plan update. The comprehensive plan is a guiding document for the city of Pasco uh that identifies a set of strategies, goals and policies uh related to growth, growth management, uh specifically to cover the elements of uh land use, housing, economic development, transportation, facilities, parks of recreation, uh public services, et cetera. Um, and so looking at those required elements and um, uh, how should the city uh, uh strategically plan on those elements as we accommodate um fifty or sixty thousand new residents um within the next twenty years? Um, so that'd be an effort that'll, uh, that's kicking off very soon. Um, we'll be working, um, uh, once a consultant is selected, we'll work with the consultant and it'll be an item that um is front of the planning commission um, uh, very frequently. And we look forward to working with the uh planning commission, our council, and certainly the members of the public and the Pasco stakeholders for that very important uh, uh effort, which will probably take about two years to complete, so.
All right, thank you. Lots of important work. Your, your idea of fun is maybe different of mine, but uh lots of important work. Thank you. Um, with nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn this meeting.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. The meeting is adjourned at seven fourteen PM. Thank you, everyone.